Hello all.
Gary.
Hello.
Hey Gary.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you. It being 7:00 PM and having a quorum insisting of councilors Golembeski, Mataronis, Wallach, and Mushin, we will call the meeting to order. And the first item of business is approval of minutes of the 3rd of December.
Motion to approve the town council minutes of December 3rd, 2020, unless anybody has any comments or questions on them.
The motion is made by Councilor Mataronis, second by Councilor Wallach, to approve minutes, any discussion. A roll call vote, Councilor Golembeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Thank you. The next item of business is announcements. The first of the announcements is to say that the town has been awarded a AAA Community Safety Award for 30, that would be 3-0-minute, 3-0-years, where there have been no pedestrian fatalities in Little Compton. And AAA wanted to ensure that we were aware of that. She also has intending to be a public affairs person there. Diana Gugliotta has made arrangements to meet with the police chief to present a plaque recognizing that safety condition. Any comments on that? All right, and then the other announcement that I'd like to make is that the town hall, and this is, this is announced on our website, the town hall and associated attached buildings will be limited commencing Monday, the 21st. They will be, access to the town hall and its attached buildings will be limited to town employees only. This measure is being taken in order to reduce the opportunity for inadvertent spread of the coronavirus. Anyone that needs services involving the transfer of documents or payments is asked to call the appropriate office, and that office number is available on the website, and arrange for service via a mutually agreed arrangement. Basically, if you need to speak with the clerk face-to-face and need to exchange documents, please call the clerk's office, and the clerk will establish with you an arrangement by which that can happen. What we're trying to do is to, to reduce as much as possible the interchange of people within the town hall. And we appreciate very much the patience that people have already shown with respect to that. Look forward to trying to meet all of the needs of the public while at the same time limiting the access to the town hall itself and the, and the workers there. Basically, this is important to us and perhaps can be accommodated differently in larger communities because we have a staff that is so small. The loss or the absence of one person often reduces a, an office to either zero or one person that can handle issues. So what we're trying to do is make sure we're able to provide full service throughout the day, each day, and hence the purpose of this, this decision. We don't intend that this remain in place permanently, but at least for the time being, that's what we're going to do. I also noticed that Councilor Moore has joined us, and we now have a full council of five members. Yes, sir, Administrator.
Mr. President, if I may, the numbers also will be published on the door just in case they arrive there and it's, how will they contact? They'll be able to see the respective numbers on the door as well.
So if you arrive at the town hall and don't have the phone number of the, of the person you're trying to reach, that will be available to you. All right, any other announcements that need to be made? The next item then is the town, is department head reports. There are four, the building official, the tax assessor, the administrator, and the director of public work.
Motion to approve all the department head reports as written, unless anybody has any comments or questions on those.
Second that.
The motion is made by Councilor Mataronis, second by Councilor Wallach, to place these documents, these reports on file. Is there any discussion? I'll ask for a roll call vote, Councilor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councilor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councilor Moore.
Aye.
Councilor Wallach.
Aye.
And Mushin, aye. An action that is taken. Next, we move to old business. In your packet, you'll see a report from the planning board on the proposal which was presented to us at a previous meeting in which the business zone was requested to be moved from its current position in the middle of Lot 8-1 in Platte 30 to completely accommodate the entire block. And to consider setting a public hearing to propose amending the zoning district should we decide to support it. I would call to your attention that the planning board approved unanimously this item and cited a number of things in addition to their obligation to find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. They did that. They also had a number of goals which the town is attempting to achieve, which were part of their, their consideration. Specifically, supporting a local economy that creates job opportunities, support local service industries. So it was a strong vote of support. Is there, is there discussion on this matter?
Bob.
Yeah.
Sid and Dave seem to have done what we requested. They went to the planning board. The planning board is, is the guidance for the town going forward. So, you know, the Wardell family have been in town probably longer than my family, which is over 100 years. So, and they've always been good neighbors, always been good to the town. So I don't have a problem with this. The, like I say, the comp, comp plan, people that oversee the comp plan are all in agreement with it. So I'd like to move that this goes to a public hearing because I'm sure this is time sensitive to the Wardells to try to get something going over there. And I'm sure that they're going to be aware of the surroundings and be courteous to the neighbors and, you know, when they do whatever they have to do there as, as they have been in the past.
Our next meeting is the 7th of January. Would you like to, would that be part of your motion? That we schedule that public hearing for the 7th?
I need to interrupt that. I cannot make the advertising requirements for January 7th.
Thank you.
It would have to be the second meeting in January, which would be the 21st.
I'll make that public hearing if all agree to it on January 21st, a second meeting in January called Public Hearing on the presentation by Sid Wardell to change the lot, to change the business zone to his lot line.
Second.
The motion is made by Councilor Mataronis, second by Councilor Moore, to schedule a public hearing for the 21st for the purpose of approving a extension of the business zone to the lot line. For any further discussion? I'll ask for a roll call vote, Councilor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councilor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councilor Moore.
Aye.
Councilor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushin, aye. The motion carries and we'll ask that the clerk carry out the actions that she has just described. All right, the next item of business is to approve special directive 5, the fifth revision. This is becoming unfortunately a regular occurrence, but basically what this does is asks the council to empower the council president with special powers in state of emergency, and those would extend then through that same meeting, the 21st of January. So as, I'm sorry, would extend through the 22nd of January so that at our next meeting, prior to that, on the 21st, we could approve an extension should we need it. I would solicit a motion to approve my signing this fifth revision to special directive 5.
So moved.
Back then.
The motion is made by Councilor Golembeski, second by Councilor Mataronis. Is there further discussion? I'll ask for a roll call vote, Councilor Golembeski.
Aye.
Councilor Mataronis.
Aye.
Councilor Moore.
Aye.
Councilor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushin, aye. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you. The next item of business is the status of the response to the proposed revision of the Rhode Island DEM wetland rules. This is a matter which has caused us to engage, and by us, I'll say it's, it's thanks to Conservation Commission Chair, Don McNaughton, and Planning Board Chair Mike Steers, along with others, Carol Procky, Scott Rabidu, that we have engaged to make the case to the state that we are different. And that case is being made, I think. Well, it turns out now that because of the snowstorm, there was to have been a public hearing this evening that is being deferred until early January. Comments are due in writing by the 22nd of January. So we have time prior to our next meeting should we need to reissue a joint letter which we put together. I'll, I noticed that Mr. McNaughton is with us, and I'll ask him perhaps to amplify on anything that we need to hear. Yes, sir.
Thanks. You did a very good job. You've been listening. So just to recap sort of how we got here, there was state legislation passed in 2015 requiring that DEM and CRMC update wetland regulations, hopefully to what they call a single standard, which both streamlined and simplified the wetland regulations, but also had both DEM and CRMC for the first time using the same standards wherever possible. So they issued a draft finally in 2019. And you may remember that the town council then authorized a letter to be sent in response to that draft suggesting that Little Compton had concerns about some of the language in the draft. And the, they went back and they did update the draft in a variety of ways, but didn't necessarily attack the issues that we as a town had. And the revised proposed draft has come back out again. And as Bob mentioned, there is now a public hearing scheduled for, for January. It was to be on the night of the snowstorm or the day of the snowstorm. So there's a public hearing now to be scheduled in January, and written comments to the revised proposed draft are now due on January 22nd. So the proposed regs as a, as they now stand generally increase wetlands protections across the state. Rivers, ponds, vernal pools, swamps, et cetera. However, these updated regulations also eliminate the ability of a municipality to pass local rules more stringent than the states. And you may know that we've had in place in Little Compton rules that are more stringent than the states for over 20 years. So while most areas of the state will see increased protection, Little Compton will actually see decreased protection in certain areas since our local rules will go away. Jamestown also will lose since their high groundwater ordinance, which offers increased protection, certain areas of the island was, will also be struck down by these new legislation or the new regulations. And since both Jamestown and Little Compton sit atop fractured bedrock and rely on wells and individual septic systems, and we are the only places in the state operating under such circumstances. So we've been talking to Jamestown about a common strategy that might enhance our success at getting certain aspects of the proposed regs changed and strengthened. Now, we do believe, and this is where the strategy comes in, we do believe that Jamestown and Little Compton should each write letters commenting on the proposed regulations instead of jointly issuing one so that DEM hears our concerns from two municipalities not in one joint letter. And with the extended timetable for the public hearing and the written comments, we will now be able to come back to the, the town council in early January with our recommended letter, if you so desire, for comment and approval. So this is a good thing in that it gives us a little more time A to write it, but B, it also gives you guys time to review it if you so desire. Now ideally, our letter would be signed jointly by both the concert, by each of the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the town council, just as our 2019 letter was. And by the way, the Conservation Commission met with Anya Wallach, maybe just two, two days ago perhaps. And so got, got Anya up to speed, and she supports this strategy. So now just to finish, we finally have two potential paths to follow in our attempt to increase the protections for Little Compton. First, while the new regs are still proposed and in draft form, we hope to encourage a redraft to further strengthen wetland protections. If that fails, there is a municipal petition clause in the regulations, and we can try after the new regulations are in place to request preferential treatment given our fractured bedrock setting, reliance on wells, and reliance on individual septic systems. So I hope to come back to you on, at the January 7th meeting with a proposed letter to be signed jointly by the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Town Council. And hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll have some luck at pushing back on, on some of the conditions in the new regulations. Any questions?
Yeah, if I may, Bob?
Yeah.
Don, the, the ability of the town to have flexibility in that 50-foot as it stands now to 100 feet, that, that's basically going to go away, and it's going to be a lock at 75?
It is going to go away. Now, I don't want to get too confusing, but in addition, so when the regs change, as, as Councilor Golembeski mentioned, the state has a 50-foot buffer, the town put on top of that a 50-foot buffer. So right now, we enjoy 100 feet, but that's going back to 75 feet under the new regs. However, as in, as a, in addition to the new regs, they are adding a setback to the buffer. So we will have a 75-foot buffer, but then primary structures will have a 20-foot setback in addition to that buffer. So for primary structures, there'll be a, a, a distance, if you will, from the wetland edge of 95 feet. The 75 plus the 20. The problem is, is that that only applies to primary structures. It does not apply to accessory structures, and it does not apply to septic fields or leach fields, which we find to be particularly troublesome. So we will be seeing reduced protection of our wetlands when they go to the 75-foot statewide reg.
Can, can I just ask for a clarif, clarify? Are you telling me you can put a septic system closer under the new regulation, but the house is farther away?
That is correct. Well, no, because, no, because remember the state reg is currently 50 feet. So under the new state reg, it would be 75 feet for the septic system and 95 feet for the house. But you will be able to put a septic field closer than the house, yes.
Okay, okay.
Is there some part of that you're having difficulty understanding?
Yeah, well, things I can't say out loud at a public meeting, yes, there is.
I, I really appreciate the completeness of Don's explanation. That, that is the, the essence of, of what we're going to argue and have done so, at least verbally, but will, will capture in a, in a written document. And as he says, the decision is that our, our co-complaintant or co-petitioner, Jamestown, will be doing something similar in an effort to try to English our content. All right.
Mr. President, can I just say, thank you, Don, first of all, for, for your work on this, and also for giving me a crash course on our geology here in town. And, and I assume the rest of the council is, is well familiar with the significance of this fractured bedrock, individual septic system, individual wells. But, but I, I, well, I knew that we were in a, you know, that, that freshwater resources are delicate in Little Compton. I didn't quite appreciate it until I got introduced to it by Don. So I want to, I want to really thank him for giving me an education and staying on top of this.
And that's very important that you say that because it is something that is not appreciated in a, in a zeal to say, let's standardize it so that across the state we can have one rule. And we, we get that, but in this particular case, that one rule is, is particularly damaging, so.
Yeah.
Great. All right, so we will expect then to have such a discussion at our next meeting in which some of those points will be captured in a, in a joint letter draft that we're, will be asked to approve.
And I'll make sure I work with Carol to figure out at what point do we have to get to the letter so you have a chance to review it prior to the meeting.
Thank you. And anyone that needs a copy of the letter that we did send in the last round, we can certainly provide that as, as kind of basis for where we're headed. All right. The next then item is the council oversight assignment. This is proven to be a very confusing action by the town council president in which he has sought to gather another set of eyes on each of our department documentation, both charter and, and ordinance. My, my intention here is not to say we're going to have a counselor that will run off and meet with the police chief and cut out the administrator, and basically the two of them will then decide what the police department's handling. On the other hand, neither am I anxious to say, everybody's got to have something here, so, you know, sign up, and you've got to have, you've got to do something. I'm grateful that everyone has expressed their opinions. The one in front of you, the document in front of you, I would point out, has some proposed assignments. I've been asked by one counselor, Councilor Mataronis, that he be given the assessor assignment, and based on his years of being in that role, and have agreed with him that I will take the fire department assignment. So as I see it right now, and please, I'll stop talking in a minute. You can ask me other questions. But I would be responsible for the solicitor and the fire department, then Councilor Mataronis for the assessor, Councilor Wallach for the finance, Councilor Moore for Public Works, and Councilor Golembeski for the. I'll ask for your questions.
Well, at the last meeting, Bob, you know, as you stated, I, I have a close relationship with the tax assessor because I go in there and talk to her quite frequently about the abatement list. So I actually spoke to her yesterday, and she did say she had quite a few things that she wanted to change on the charter. You know, I told her, well, we don't want to change the whole charter, but if there's things that are necessary to be changed to make your office run better, that's fine. So she said she'd be willing to work with me. But I did say at the last meeting that I would work with her, so. Okay?
Got it. We, I want to again be clear, this is not an effort to supersede the action of the Charter Review Commission, which we will appoint in January and which will have a, an important role in this whole process, but rather to make sure that a counselor looks at the inside baseball kinds of things that go on in the town hall particularly that might not be evident to someone who's simply reviewing the charter and looking to, to propose revisions to it, or for that matter, looking at town ordinances. As you know, we had an Board of Elected Assessors very recently. Many of our, our procedures and ordinances speak back to that but are confusing in the current environment because that isn't how we do business now. So those are the kinds of things that need to be looked at. But to your point, Councilor Mataronis, we're not, we're not trying to embed within the charter every detail of how anything works, nor is that the job that I'm proposing for the council. That's really the town administrator and his reporting, direct reports, which are the departments that will be careful not to violate.
Hey Bob, when you were thinking about this process of each of us taking these sections of the charter to, to review, do you see us working in some way with the Charter Review Commission or giving our proposals to them to, to look over? If, if for anything, just so they're not doing double duty and, you know, and, and doing the same work that we might be doing or at least getting their suggestion, you know, if we do have some changes to make?
Yeah, that's a very important point, and, and I think you've expressed it correctly. Often, the Charter Review Commission will come to the council or to a councilor and say, what needs to be changed? What should we be focused on? What are the things that you think we ought to be doing? And, and it's anticipating that, that part of what I, what I'd like here. But I, I would like the Charter Review Commission to act in the way that the charter calls for it to do, to simply take the charter and review it. But, but to seed that a bit with, here are some things that when you get to this chapter and verse, realize it's currently in conflict with this other chapter and verse, let's say. And so we would encourage you to look carefully at that and see if that's something we can make. Because we're, we're hanging on, if you will, to some things that we used to do business with an RCOS. We don't have an RCOS anymore, Recreation, Conservation, Open Space Committee. So it's those kinds of things that we need to, to try to clean. Okay. With your concurrence then, if there's no other conversation, I'll issue this with the, with the tasking that's there. And feel free to say, I've looked at it, and I don't see anything there for me to do, and I'm, I've talked to Tony, and he's got it all in hand. That's, that's fine. I just want to, want to make sure that we, that we don't leave any stone unturned.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yeah.
Okay, I concur totally with you, you know, and to the question of Councilor Moore. Obviously, this is to reflect more the practice, you know, the current practice and the direction that the town is moving in because you look at the, as you pointed out, the Board of Assessors, now we have a full-time, you know, professional assessor and so forth. But then likewise, there's a few other things in many of those areas that certainly will be interesting to see take on that in what the proposals will be to the Charter Commission.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, the next item of business then is the status of the Municipal Resiliency Program Grant Application. I don't have my participants called up here. I don't know if Counselor, former Counselor, he is. Larry Anderson is with us. So Larry, would you have any summation of, of where we stand that you'd like to provide?
Sure, thank you. This will just be a brief summation of where we are since we last reported to you at your last meeting. President Mushin, Town Administrator Texera, and I, the, the core team, we've met this week with Bill Moore, Public Works Director, have been in touch with Don Maderas representing the Beach Commission. And I'll just remind you that our, our goal is to submit an application January 15th of next year. So we have basically a month to go to pull this together. Where we stand is pretty much come to focus on projects. We described these before. We had a longer menu prior to this. Now we're focused primarily on the two projects we previously, previously described, one of which is the, is work on the entrance area at South Shore Beach to do. I'm looking at some notes I had from a conversation with Don Maderas earlier today, a combination of things. They're all related to water control, flood mitigation, stormwater mitigation, erosion protection. This involves building a, a barrier on the north side of the entrance along Tunipis Pond to regrade the beach, raise it somewhat to control a variety of things. So that's item number one. Don reports that that project as presented has already received C R M C approval recently. So in that regard, that's, that's a, a significant asset to our application, I would say. There's been some discussion about altering that application somewhat. That it calls for a concrete barrier along that northern side of the parking area. The original plan calls for temporary concrete barriers. It's been suggested that perhaps a more permanent concrete barrier would be more beneficial, more durable. Don reports that that would require another visit to C R M C. So that's, that's a matter of further discussion. So that's project number one. And I, I think we feel pretty good about the status of that largely based on the beach commission's effort and especially Don Maderis's work on their behalf. The second project that we anticipate might be included in our final proposal is work on Town Way, which Bill Moore has looked into in some detail with the engineer from Beta Group, who is already, the group that's already been at work on a survey of town roads. That's somewhat more conceptual status, but the engineer with whom Bob visited the site has had some experience with similar types of sites with regard to controlling erosion runoff. Bill specifically cited siltation runoff from, it's a steep, from, from law, from West Main Road along the road down to the, to the ocean. So we're waiting. Bill is waiting for a sort of a concept sketch, a rough estimate of potential costs for work there. So that's where we stand. We anticipate that we'll be back to the council at your early January meeting with, we hope, a fairly concrete final proposal or draft proposal, which will likely require your approval. I should mention in talking with Don Maderis that we'll be looking probably to meet with or have the beach commission meet to endorse their participation in this, in this grant proposal. So we will also be reporting and have to think about and report to you on the town, how, how we will document and provide the town's matching share. We have to work out the details of that. But that's basically where we stand. We, we've come down to focus on two projects. We think they can work, make a good concrete case consistent with the requirements of the municipal resource resilience program criteria. So that's, that's where we stand. We'll be meeting pretty much weekly, or we have placeholder meetings pretty much weekly to, to move this along. I, I would say that we're feeling fairly good about our ability to weather a, a proposal in a timely way.
And I would just add that each of these two projects each have broader implications where we could use what we learned either, not either, from both the town beach and from Town Way in other similar kinds of either protection projects or stormwater management projects. So we're looking to build off of this to say, once we've done these two, we have other places in mind that we want to, to move to. But we think these are the two most compelling. Any other questions on that comment? Right? Let's move then to new business. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Do business and I'll ask the clerk to describe our, I know we're, we're just into December of 2020. We want to look forward to December of 2021 and talk about when we'll meet then.
Well, in December 2021, you have two meetings that would be normally on December 9th and December 23rd. The 23rd actually falls on the day prior to the town hall being closed early for Christmas holiday. So I didn't know whether or not that second meeting in December was something that you would rather not hold a council meeting. If you choose to not hold that meeting and you just had your next meeting, the first meeting in January, you would have a November, November 18th meeting and then a December 9th meeting, which is three weeks. And then you would not meet again until January 6th, which would be four weeks. I'm not sure whether that's something this council would like to do. December does generally be a little quieter than the other months. Or alternatively, you could choose another date for your second meeting in December.
What say you? It seems to me six won't happen as the other, but we could move that. If we chose to have a single meeting in December, we could put it in the middle of the month and make it December 16th. Or we could leave it where it is in December 9th.
Are there any, any financial bills paid or anything like that that get gummed up? Because we skip a meeting or does that not, does that not cause any problems?
Well, I would suggest that you could at your meeting that you hold in December, authorize the town administrator to pay the bills or the invoices or have the authority to authorize them to be paid at whatever date you choose, so that they're not held up.
Right.
We, we've done that at the end of a fiscal year, for example. This would be at the end of a calendar year, but we would, we would authorize the administrator to make those.
And there's no, there's no real housekeeping due at the end of December because it's just the, the end of the year. It's not the end of the fiscal calendar?
No.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with one meeting. But I, I agree with you, Bob. I think moving it maybe to the closer to the middle of the month might be a better idea.
Well, the only thing that accomplishes, you move your number of weeks from November 18th to being three weeks to December 9th. It will then become four weeks and then your three-week interval is the next one. So you're really only pushing a, a day off.
Right. I'm not, I'm not opposed to skipping a meeting, but I will note that this year we did move the calendar around. We just moved the, the meetings up a week for the month of December because our second meeting was supposed to be on Christmas Eve, according to the, the regular schedule. So.
It's what you needed to.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, again, I'm not opposed, whatever, you know, whatever the council wants to do, I'm fine.
The only, the only concern I have is if somebody has to do something with council approval or at a council meeting, that four weeks is quite a stretch. So they would either have to get it in for that one December meeting, or possible we could make it December 2nd and December 16th. But anywhere the council wants to go, I'm gonna mean you too.
That, that is similar to what you did this year.
Right.
Right.
I'm not sure for three weeks and then a four-week hiatus for us is beneficial to the town.
Well, then I'll, then I'll propose that we meet on December 2nd, December 16th and have two meetings next, you know, next, next December.
I'll second that.
The motion is made by Counselor Moore and seconded by Counselor Maderonis that the December 21 meetings would be conducted on the first and the third Thursdays of the month. That is the second and the 16th. Is there any discussion?
I just did, I think one meeting in seven weeks is a little bit stretching it. So I don't think that's fair to the town.
Any other discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote. Counselor Gollumbesky.
Aye.
Counselor Maderonis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushin, aye. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Good, good point.
Thank you.
Next item of new business is to review and approve the terms of engagement for the solicitor. Bit of discussion here in keeping with our ongoing efforts, the solicitor, the administrator and I did define more carefully and specifically where various charges are made and how, how that happens. We created a document, and this is something the administrator has sought to ensure that we have, especially for those department heads and others that don't have, well, people that are not under contract and therefore have a contract with the council to have some form of documentation. So this documentation lays out the terms under which we hire for the purpose of the town's legal services, the town solicitor. So basically it says what his duties are, what, how the compensation through our current breakdown of the categories occurs, calls out legal work that is, is either things for which the solicitor is not best suited, that there's someone else who would better suit that particular item or from which he must refuse, that, that comes from a different category of funding. Finally, that, that these terms by mutual agreement can obviously be altered. Any questions or concerns or comments on this stuff?
Just, just for clarification. So before, we've never had this term of engagement used when, when hiring a solicitor.
Right. Then the, the real difficulty is we don't hire a solicitor. We don't offer the solicitor a specific salary and say, for this, you will do this for us. Rather, we, we appoint one. And historically, we have, speaking from my perspective, which is a fairly short history relative to some others, that, that engagement has not been captured in some form to say, this is what we're agreeing to do. So that, that's the purpose behind this. The term, terms of engagement is a, you know, certainly not, if, if there's a better term, I'm, I'm ready. But that, that's kind of, it's not a contract. It's not something where, you know, we have a contractual relationship.
But I think it's better than what we previously, previously had. Now the solicitor knows what's expected of him. And we, you know, he knows what's expected of us. We know what's expected of him. It's written down. So I, you know, after you, Tony and I met with him, I think it was a good meeting. And we all came to the same conclusion that this was actually needed and, you know, for the benefit of both sides. So I think this is a, a good start on the solicitor situation.
And, and it may make its way back to my thought about ordinances. It may make its way into the, into the town ordinance governing it. And then we would have a public hearing and all those sorts of things to do that. So there's, this doesn't have to be the end of this as, as standing alone.
I do think, I also think this is helpful if the council were to ever take advantage of the change to the charter that the town made in 2018 regarding the 60-day period in which we have to appoint a solicitor or go out to search. You know, I think that this document helps better clarify what would be expected of any solicitor that's appointed.
So Bob, is this, is this a handshake, a wave, or something signed by both parties? Is it something we're putting in the ordinance? No, I'm sorry. I just.
As item five states, it's a, it's an agreement between the council and the solicitor. So I would ask that we vote to approve this as the statement of, of the terms of engagement between ourselves and the solicitor.
So move.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Counselor Maderonis, seconded by Counselor Gollumbesky to approve this. Is there further discussion?
Is there any input from the solicitor that he wants to make on this before we approve it or is he good?
And I had a question.
I, I'm all set with the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor.
So this agreement is meant to apply to any, to an arrangement we would have with any attorney to be our solicitor, not?
That's right. It is, it is the, the agreement under which we, for example, put the budget together for the year. And we say, these are the categories of budget appropriations that are applicable to the solicitor's office and how they're to be managed. So that we're, you know, we're dealing with agreed upon terms. And also, we're trying to incorporate the idea of the administrator so that when a department head wishes to access, I'll call it, the solicitor, that department head needs to speak with the administrator so as to be sure that there's not overlapping requirements. In this particular document, I've said that for boards, commissions and committees, which are the council's responsibility to appoint, that the council would be the entity. As you recall, we have in our, in our, I'll call it boilerplate council agenda, we have a spot for anyone who's asking for services of the solicitor. For example, the planning board or the, or some other entity that wants to do that. So those would remain and those would be the process, that would be the process by which for any solicitor.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Are you ready to vote on this matter? Counselor Gollumbesky.
Aye.
Counselor Maderonis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushin, aye. So that carries. Our next item of business is to consider letters of interest to serve as town solicitor. The, the document that I have included in the packet is one that has been in the consent file in the previous meeting. It is the assertion or application by the current town solicitor, Richard Humphrey, to the members of the council that he's applying for that position.
Bob, well, counselors, I'm going to make a motion to engage a current solicitor. If any other solicitor want to put their name in, it's been since the election, they had plenty of time to do it. So I don't want to, I don't think it's fair to the solicitor to be hanging out there and flapping in the wind. So that'd be my motion to engage the current solicitor.
The motion by Counselor Maderonis to engage Richard Humphrey is returned to the position of solicitor. Is that my accurate?
You're accurate.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Gollumbesky. Discussion.
I had a question. Did, was there any effort to post this opportunity or solicit other proposals since the election?
There has not been, no.
And that's allowed, right? We, we have the ability to do that?
That is, that is the method that we have used. It is not, well, I, I, it is the method that, that has been used in the past. I believe it is also the method used by some other communities. I can't, I asked the administrator if, if the reappointment of your current solicitor is done in a similar fashion or there's you're, you're muted, sir.
Okay. I can my voice back. Okay. Yes, here in Bristol, as a counselor here, we, we do, we act similar because it's a professional service. You can opt to go out or you can simply just reappoint the current, the current solicitor.
And have you routinely gone out to solicit other proposals or not?
No, we have not, except when it's been some challenge, you know, amongst the counselors and we've done that. Aside from that, we've just reappointed. In fact, we just did that last week in Bristol. But then again, as the president pointed out, it's a practice that's been going on. Going forward, maybe that's something that you want to rethink.
I know, I know last year we didn't advertise for a solicitor and somebody put their letter in to be the solicitor of the town. So I mean, if people want to be solicitor in this town, I don't think it's us. I mean, if people wanna be solicitor in this town, I don't think it's us to go out, up to us to go out there and. Look at every lawyer and say, come on down, we want to use your lawyer. And anybody on the council could have done that already, as far as I'm concerned, if you think somebody's better than Mr. Humphrey. Um, with all the knowledge he's got with the twenty years he's been solicitor. I think you should have gone out and asked for a solicitor to come down with their, uh, requirements forward.
I, I think, uh, I think in twenty eighteen we did post it. I think Bob and I did work together. I remember on some level, we worked together to post the position. Uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Bob. And also to respond to your comment, Gary, I, uh. I don't think any individual council member is greater than the whole body. And I wish that going forward, and some of this is on me, I could have put this on the agenda. Earlier, you know, early in December if I wanted to, or if any one of us wanted to. But I think going forward. Um. You know, maybe we should make an attempt to. Have a, have a better system. Um, that's just my thought on it.
Okay. Well, that may come, come to fruition when we do the charter amendments.
Yeah, it is a, it is a unique position, obviously, uh, and our current circumstance is. That we uniquely have a solicitor who has served the town, um, for three decades with, uh, with a brief interruption. So, um, I, uh, am disinclined, uh, under these circumstances to say. Um, let's just kind of see what. What we might have and, uh, and do that, uh, at the end of a, a calendar year. Uh, with the kinds of things that we have in play at the moment. That are dependent upon, um, some historical perspective, but that's my opinion to your point, Counselor Moore. Uh, it is, we are not, uh, this is not, um, a one-person show. That's why we will vote on the matter. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, if I may, um, I, I hear loudly and clear, you know, the, uh, the comments that are made. And certainly it's, uh, uh, it, it would be a good point to be made, however, due to the, uh, uh, the pending. Uh, legal, uh, legal cases that we have at the present time, I think it would be futile for us to go out and search for somebody. Uh, I think at this point, we would, uh, need to continue, uh, with the solicitor. Uh, that would be my, but going forward, that's something to, to think about.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote? I'll ask for a roll call vote. Counselor Galumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
No.
Counselor Wallach.
No.
Counselor Mushen, aye. Thank you. The motion, the motion carries on a vote of three to two. Um, the next item of business is a proposed ordinance change from the. Uh. Building inspector via the town administrator. Um, uh, you have in front of you the endorsement of the administrator. Uh, I don't believe you have, uh, the document itself. Uh, in essence, he has, uh, the administrator has captured the essence of it. Basically, the, uh. Building official has determined that there are, um. Situations where people have, uh, in, in his sense, in his observation. Purposely chosen not to pull a building permit. And, uh, are waiting for someone to catch them, to use a, uh. Term of art. Um, the solution that he has suggested is that instead of a twenty dollar minimum fine. We would have a two hundred and fifty dollar maximum fine. I have heard from more than one. A small business person who has indicated that on occasion, a person. Like the rest of us makes an error, uh, does not pull a permit, doesn't, not doing it deliberately. Rather responding, let's say, to a homeowner who says, I need this done and I need it done this weekend. And, uh, goes ahead and then, and then goes and draws the permit, uh, after beginning work. And, uh, and asks for forgiveness rather than permission. Uh, those folks have said, that has worked. It's not a, I'm not a scoff law. I'm not somebody who's trying to, to not, uh. Pay what I need to do. I frankly either forgot it or I didn't realize. I mean, I don't have the time to, to draw the permit. So I'm off and running before. Uh, all of that to say, to automatically impose a two hundred and fifty dollar fine to them was an onerous. Solution.
Would a hundred and twenty-five dollars maybe more appropriate?
You're gonna go. No, it should be, it should be nothing.
Wow.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I.
Go ahead.
A lot of stuff I have to recuse myself from because I'm in the trades, but this one I think I gotta stick up for the small guy. Um, uh, we run around all day long. We, you know, somebody calls, you go and do a job, you do it. And I've actually called for an inspection and the guy said, hey, you don't even have a permit. And I go, oh, God. And I go in and I pull the permit. The idea is to get the permit pulled and get the inspection. It's not to play catcher, to try and catch these little guys. That make honest mistakes. I understand if you've got somebody out there that's playing a game and trying to get away with stuff, then yeah. Then he should be penalized. But this just blankets and gives, uh, the building official the ability to say. I don't like you today, so you're getting this. And I'm not saying that about Peter. Peter's a nice guy, uh, but I'm just saying a future building official uses.
Let's, uh, let's not get into, uh, discussions of the, uh, performance of the building official in this, uh, unwarranted environment. Um, point well made, sir. Uh, let me ask this. Could, could there be something not unlike the, um. Uh, false alarm that the fire chief or the, or the calls for service that the police. Uh, do where a person, uh, violates that on a regular basis? Could, could there be a threshold that if it's your third, you know, if it's your third event of such. Kind, could, could we re, could we rework it to have a penalty? For the person who's doing it deliberately without unnecessarily affecting the person. Who's honestly either forgotten or is under time duress to get something done.
And that's, that's what I would like to see. The, the penalty is for those who are purposely trying to avoid it. Not the ones that are just busy with life, don't have secretaries, don't have office staff. Even though it's online, doesn't mean you got the time to do it all the time. Um, I just.
I've got, um.
Sorry, I'm wound up about this one.
Without, I've now, uh, taken, uh, twenty minutes to describe something to the administrator now. Give him a chance to, to speak.
Well, I actually put a car before the horse. I thought that Peter had submitted or had the document ready to go. Uh, so this was to support that, but it's, it's pretty clear and I hear, uh, you know, Counselor Galumbeski's concern. Um, i- it's in discussion with Peter. It's not for that purpose. And but if you don't have something there, then there's nothing for him to hold. Some of these folks that are, you know, habitually do things purposely. You know, in a way that, uh, what do you do? What does he do? He doesn't have any tools, uh, to really use if necessary. Um, but knowing, uh, our building official, I think he could use good judgment. And again, this is up to that amount. It doesn't mean that it is a two fifty flat out.
Yeah.
That's the way I view it. And, and having conversations with him, uh, and some of the, uh, contractors, uh, that he has pointed out. It, it's, they habitually do it, you know, and we talking about somebody in a bigger dollar.
Yeah, no, I, and I, I totally agree with someone who's, their game is to try and game the system. I get that. But I'm worried about people like me and the small guys that go and, like Bob had said, you do a job on a weekend for somebody. You fix something or something goes wrong with the service and you're on a ladder in a snowstorm fixing something for somebody. And then they whack you for the two hundred and fifty and you're gonna stand your hand out and go to the homeowner and say, hey, I didn't get the permit, but the building official nailed me for this.
Just to be clear, the version that I'm looking at that's before, that I pulled from, uh, his email submittal. Says, in all such cases, such person, firm or corporation shall pay as a late filing fee, an additional fee in the amount of fifty percent of the regular fee. Or up to two hundred and fifty dollars, whichever is more. It is that phraseology that I would like to have reworked so that, uh, so that the building official is not obligated to charge. Two hundred and fifty dollars each time there is such a.
Well, maybe Paul and, and this, um. Town administrator could come up with some language because he's a tradesman. He deals with this. So there has to be some kind of trigger. To deter the people that are doing this constantly versus the person that. Might break a window on Friday and has somebody come over on Saturday.
Right.
Fix the window without a permit and then he goes Monday to get a permit.
Be clear, this is a proposed ordinance change. We don't have in front of us an ordinance. So I, I would like to not deal with this tonight. Rather, I'd like to see something with the comments that we've made tonight incorporated that we can then respond to. We're responding only to, uh, a recommendation rather than the ordinance itself.
I, I think that's fine, Bob, but I think Paul should have some input because he's the guy that lives this situation.
I agree entirely.
I'll work, I'll, I'll work with the solicitor on the language.
All right, Paul. I'm available tomorrow.
And administrator. Solicitor administrator.
Actually, I would include the building official before me if you're gonna do, if you're gonna go in that direction.
Very good.
Well, that's all right. We'll get it. We'll, we'll have a party. We'll all do it.
We'll, we'll take no action on this, uh, this recommendation. Uh, the next item of business is to approve an amendment adopted by the Little Compton Housing Trust. To include the phrase for electronic mail in two spaces. This appears to me to be straightforward. This is something for which they must seek our concurrence. Uh, this is allowing electronic mail to take the place of the postal mail that the current version accommodates.
I'll make a motion to approve this, but this, it doesn't have to go to public hearing or anything. This is just bylaws. It's not an ordinance, correct?
Correct. This is their bylaws. I, I would ask though that you amend the sixty day period that the council was supposed to approve this. Due to circumstances, they were not able to get back to the council within that sixty day period, so. Um, technically by their bylaws, their vote is supposed to be null and void. But I was hoping that with the circumstances of COVID and everything else, that you would. Find it gracious to waive that particular period and approve their, their.
So I would seek a motion that approves the proposed changes and acknowledges. And, and defers or, or, uh, yes, acknowledges and, uh, the. Uh, sixty day limitation. On, uh, it's a middle.
So move.
Second.
Motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Wallach. Is there further discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Counselor Galumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushen, aye. Um. The next item is communication, the request from AZ group leader Gil Sartini to use the meeting hall.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve as, um, as long as she finds the dates that are workable for her and won't, uh. Conflict with anybody else that might want to use it.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Galumbeski to approve the request. Is there further discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Galumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushen, aye. Thank you. Next is the abatement list submitted by the assessor of single item.
Uh, I did speak with, uh, the tax assessor yesterday. I think we all know who Ron Tomaro is. Uh, the veteran's exemption was removed in error. And if anybody deserves a, a veteran's exemption, it's Ron. So I'm gonna make the motion to approve.
I'll start.
Motion is made by Counselor Mataronis. I'm sorry, the second was.
Go ahead.
Second.
Counselor Moore. Uh, is there further discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Counselor Galumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushen, aye. Uh, the consent calendar.
Motion place consent calendar on file unless anybody wants to call anything for consideration.
Second.
Motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Moore to place on file. Is there further discussion?
Just, just one quick note. When I first went on the planning board back in, um, I think it was ninety-six. Bob Green was my shepherd, so to speak, and helped me along. Uh, so just thumbs up and thank you very much to Bob.
Yeah, good, very good work.
I agree with Paul. I would call him a shepherd, though.
Uh, roll call vote. Counselor Galumbeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Aye. The payment of the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is made by Counselor Galumbeski, second by Counselor Moore to pay the bills as presented. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Counselor Galumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mushen, aye. Uh, there being no further business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas. Go build a snowman.